Hello, Ryan. Here to be here is the County Commissioner's meeting is now in session. The Honorable Power of Shepherd who presides, please remain steady.
I'd like to call the August 2020 meeting of the Hammond County Commission, everybody to order at this time, please. Would you join me, please, and pray? Let us pray. Father in heaven, we gather here tonight recognizing our dependence upon you. We, Father, know that we live, move, and have our being with you. Without you, we are nothing. So we ask, Father, for your blessings upon us tonight as we deliberate the business that is before us. Give us the wisdom and guidance that we deem to help us make the decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of this county and also decisions that would bring honor and glory to your holy name, for it is in that name we pray. Amen.
This time I want to ask Commissioner Tim Gohans, a retired Army veteran, to please lead us in our pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, let's do our roll call, please. We do have a forum present, and we are open for business. I want to remind our audience that we have a mask mandate in the county, and so we ask that you wear your mask unless you have received prior approval not to wear the mask. And I understand that we have two in the audience that are Woods who have received prior approval. So everybody else is expected to wear a mask. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to recognize Mayor Britton for a special presentation.
I just want to take a second and, I guess, celebrate, in a way, kind of mixed emotions here with Mike, this being his last meeting as a county commissioner. Kind of celebrates two good choices that the county commission has made over the last two years, and that's one is the choice of our trustee, and then two, a choice of a county commissioner for a commissioner who had passed away. Mike, we just thank you for your service. Although short, we wish you were going to be here longer. Just want to present this to you, your picture and your nameplate, and just go thank you very much for your service.
It's been a moment. Okay. We appreciate your service. We're going to mission, and we also understand you're replacing a good job as well. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Jim Stell of the Calendar and Rules Committee.
On two A, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
Out of two B, after the mayor wants to speak. On the regular calendar, I would ask that we remove the Hill project item from the Justice Center project committee. Just based on the cost estimates that were presented to us at committee, we're recommending that we withdraw that proposal, and then we'll come back next month with another proposal on meeting the needs of the maintenance department.
Yes, sir. Out of two B, the approval of the regular calendar items excludes out nine A, the Hill property development. I'm going to put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of two B, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
All have, Chairman.
Thank you very much. The chair at this time would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'm moving it, Chairman.
Commissioner Doughty has moved that we approve it. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Out of three A, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
All have, Chairman.
Thank you very much. The chair at this time would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'm moving it, Chairman.
Commissioner Doughty has moved that we approve it. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion, then.
Out of three A, fourteen A, zero A.
Okay. The motion is approved. You have before you some recommendations to the planning commission. The mayor has recommended Charles Anderson, an incumbent planning commissioner for another four-year term, and Kyle Hale, an incumbent planning commissioner for another four-year term. So the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion for both of them. Yes, okay.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of four A, fourteen A, zero A.
Okay, the nominees are approved. At this time, we're going to receive public comments on any item that is on the agenda. If you're here tonight to address, to speak for or against the zoning change, I would request that you wait until we have a public hearing for you to make your comments on that. So at this time, the chair would entertain any comment on any item that's on the agenda.
Karen Arwood, fifteen oh one Delaware Road. Regarding the monthly checks for July 2020, is to my understanding, just a few months ago, that you still haven't gotten the zero amounts filled in that were mentioned at your committee meeting. I would be extremely concerned, or to me, it would show that if you vote to go ahead and approve monthly checks without actual numbers in the vast majority of the checks, that apparently you just don't really care and why you can vote. But, that's just a opinion of mine, but I would really like on a lot of things to see people ask, or see you guys ask a whole lot more questions, or demand to have all the information in front of you before you just blatantly vote yes for whatever. And then, on the selection of the project manager that's coming up later this evening, may I remind you of your ten-day rule. And once again, if you go ahead and select one and ignore your ten-day rule, you don't even care about rules. So what's the point? So thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Linda Noe, twenty-three forty-three Joe Stevens Road. I would like to follow up on what Ms. Arwood mentioned, the project manager. If I remember correctly, we went through a construction manager or a contractor proposal back in April, and somehow that one just died. No interviews, no anything. I inquired about that because I'd like to see what happened after all those people had done that work. And I know you had proposals from, what, 1.1 million to two-something. Of course, you were told they would probably be $200,000, something like that. Well, that was way off. Then you're doing a calling at a project manager now, and it was supposed to be like a retired contractor. And it was supposed to be, you know, sixty, seventy, maybe a hundred thousand a year for two years. That didn't work out either. But the key thing is, you have not had that contract to review for ten days, for nine days, for eight, for seven, for six, for five, for four, three, two. You've had it one day. That's a huge contract. And of course, you can just take what somebody says, and, oh yeah, we've had somebody look at it, and it's fine. But as Ms. Arwood said, this is your job to look at these. And it's your job to make sure the public has the ability to look at it. This is public business and public dollars, not just your business and your dollars. And the public hasn't seen this. So as she said, it seems there are two sets of rules. The rules you apply to the people who sit out here when you gavel them down and so forth, and then there are the rules that should apply to you but don't. That is a real problem, and if you can't see that, then that's a problem too. If the people who make the rules don't follow their rules, we don't have rules. We're no better than Portland, Chicago, Seattle, because we don't have a government with rules. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
On Bullington, three seventeen Stepplefield Street, Whitesburg. I'd just like to reiterate what Ms. Noe and Ms. Arwood just said about the ten-day rule. You know, to we the people, it makes us feel like you guys are trying to hide stuff from us, that you don't want us to know anything, that we're not mentally equipped to understand these things. And, you know, you're wrong. We understand, we understand a whole lot. I was surprised here, Mayor Britton recommended to put off about the maintenance storage building because $500,000, I don't see it, and I don't think anybody else. I mean, I have a million dollars for a metal building and concrete pad.
Let's not all be a change, so keep your comments on the agenda items, please.
Okay. Every one of you, be adults and do your job, and do it the way it's supposed to be. Do what we the people ask to do. And start playing god with us and with our money, because we pay every one of you. You work for us. And the sooner y'all learn that, the better it's going to be.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission on any item on the agenda? Seeing that, then, we're going to recess the legislative body and reconvene in an open public hearing to consider a zoning change on a piece of property located seventy-two, seventy-four St. Clair Road, Whitesburg, Tennessee, from A1 to C1. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this zoning change? If you do, please come to the podium at this time and share your comments. All right, seeing that there's no one who wishes to make any comments, we'll close the public hearing and reconvene as a legislative body. And at this time, the chair would entertain a motion dealing with that zoning change.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make the motion that we go forward with this rezoning change.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Punchaw that we approve the change. Is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Second.
Oh, we got a second from Horn.
Look over this way.
Okay, all right. Anybody, any discussion? Okay, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of seven A, fourteen A, zero A.
Okay, the change is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Randy DeBord for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the approval of the monthly checks, I first wanted to mention that on those zeros, all of those had been there because the dollars were encumbered under the 1920, and now paid in 2021, so that offsets that encumbrance. And I have a list of the checks if anybody wants to see that. So with that being said, I put it in form of a motion to approve the monthly checks.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please. Hold on just a minute. Commissioner Hahn, you are recognized.
Okay. What exactly are you saying?
I'm saying that the checks, the checks that were paid, were paid for the last year's, and so as an accounting adjustment, it goes back and offsets into that previous year instead of, and then zeros out on that, but the still, the check is still out there for that same amount of money.
Do we get a copy of the checks?
Yes.
Commissioner Doughty, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Moore, I'd like to see those checks before I give a yea or nay on these as far as the dollar amounts and where they're going. If I could, please, sir.
Let me check for you. How did you count the number? It's all this. Is that a comp? Okay. It's an accounting process.
Anybody who'd like to read these?
Yes. I would. Mr. Chairman, if I could just speak to that just for a second, and our finance directors here too, it's an accounting system issue, and that's because there was a purchase order, an encumbrance made from the prior year, and the check to pay that bill was issued in the new fiscal year. The zero represents zeroing out the purchase order and the encumbrance. The check, the check is applied and the payment is applied to the prior fiscal year. So it's a, it's an accounting issue, and you'll see that every July and August. When we pay for a PO that was issued in June, and we pay for it in July or August, in the reports that our system generates, you're going to see those zeros. So it just zeroed out the purchase order and the encumbrance is what that zeros.
So that dollar amount has already been paid? It's not showing a differentiating amount versus the numbers that we do have? So the money's already been spent prior to?
It's been prior to the check being issued?
Yes.
The money's been committed through the, through the PO and the encumbrance?
Yes.
And then the check pays the invoice?
Any more discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
Out of eight A, thirteen A, zero A.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item eight B for the ESP program request for Hammond County Board of Education. This is for the extended school program. I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of eight B, fourteen A, zero A.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item eight B for the ESP program request for Hammond County Board of Education. This is for the extended school program. I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of eight B, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item eight C, resolution 2033, resolution to authorize cooperative purchasing agreements for use and benefit of all county departments. And I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of eight C, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item eight D one, Fund 101, COVID-19 grant for $12,000. I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of eight D one, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item D eight D two, that's a refund for the HR meeting that was canceled because of COVID, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of eight D two, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
Item eight D three, Fund 101, County clerk's office reimbursement of $150 per missed meeting. Put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, let's vote the motion, please.
Out of eight D three, fourteen A, zero A.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman DeBord. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Horner of the Justice Center Jail Project Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item nine B, selection of project manager for the Justice Center project. Mayor Britton.
As you guys know, we went through a process to select a project manager for the Justice Center project, issued an RFQ, it's a request for qualifications for firms who do this kind of work, and so we got seven proposers, which you had the opportunity to interview over the last couple of weeks, and then rank those. And Burwell Construction Company out of Bristol was the top firm selected by you. You authorized me and Commissioner Horner to interview them and negotiate their fee. We asked the company to submit us a proposal. We went over it with the company on Tuesday afternoon and had them explain why they felt that they were the best value and their fee was of value for the project, and we settled on $975,000 for basically a three-year contract to first help with pre-construction services as far as being a third set of eyes on the design, looking at it from a construction company perspective, a constructibility aspects of the plans, then help Mosley pre-qualify contractors. And that's the process that we'll go through in bidding a project, is we'll make sure that the contractors who are prospective bidders actually can be bonded on this type, this large a project and are suited and have the experience, and Burwell would be involved in that process as well. Then they will also develop another, Mosley will present another cost estimate when they get done with the construction drawings. Burwell will do the same thing. They have the experience in this market, and so they will give us a price estimate as well, so we will have, we'll know pretty much where we are when it comes to bidding the project and presenting it to you in October whether to go forward with bidding the project. So Mayor Representatives from Burwell are here if you want to, if you have any questions for those gentlemen.
Commissioner Dave Smith, you are recognized.
If, if they're, if our wife is picked as the project manager, and then if they're chosen for the construction manager too, they can be doing both?
No, we're not, we're not going the construction manager route. We're just doing a general contractor route.
A general contractor?
Correct.
So if they could do the general contractor, they could...
No, they, they won't be able to bid on general, on the job.
They won't be able to bid?
No. They're, they're working for us. What, what they have proposed is working for us to represent us. They're not, they have, they're not going to bid on the actual construction of the building.
They won't be, no. The next question was, we were looking at two to $300,000 person to do this for two, three hundred thousand. At one time, it was, for a retired person, maybe $50,000. What, what happened to that?
Well, on the 200,000, Wayne, on the 200,000, I misspoke. The gentleman who we interviewed, who did the Monroe County job, did it for about 350. And, and that was a job which was about half this size. And we're adding more responsibility to this contract because they're getting involved in the reviewing the plans, giving us their input on the plans, being involved in the pre-qualification of the, of the general contractor as well, make sure the right folks are bidding on the project. And then, then they'll be looking at the site and monitoring the site throughout the construction, and then for the year after we move in, if we have any problems with any of the warranties, we have a one-year warranty with the GC, and then we have warranties with all the systems. If we have any problems with those, then we go to Burwell, and they, they're the ones who'll, who'll reconcile it with, with the GC. So they're, they're going to be, they're going to be working with us for about three years.
They'll be working with the general contractor?
Yes. They'll be working for us.
There's not really somewhere along the line where these people can save us money. That's what I'm looking at.
Yes.
Exactly. You would pick up on that under the contract, don't you?
Well, I'm Bill France, President, CEO of Burwell Construction. We're honored to be selected of the highest rated firm that's presented, and we're honored to be here tonight. So I want to answer everybody's questions. To answer that question, the value that we bring is it is our goal to try to manage the project upfront and pre-construction, to look at potential savings, that we can look at different systems and with Mosley to make sure you can get the most cost-effective system for the jail and Justice Center. Also, throughout the construction project, we'll be looking for ways to save money, or more importantly, our role here as your project manager is to prevent you all from spending more money than you should. We look closely for coordination of the drawings, so we don't have gaps. We try to minimize all of that. We do minimize all of that. So the process is, we try to save money on systems upfront after review and budgeting. Then after that point, we also try to prevent unnecessary change orders, excessive change orders, controlling the cost if anything happens like that, evaluating and advising you all with our years of knowledge concerning disruptions and cost to, to control the cost and the progress and the quality of the project. That's where the value comes in.
Will you be issuing, issuing like a report weekly or monthly or something?
We'll be issuing reports on a monthly basis. We'll be on the job site on a weekly basis. We will be notifying, do we do qualitative reports, quality control, deficiency reports, controlling shop grounds and metals, we have talked about controlling schedule, working hand in hand with the GC. But at all times, we're there as your representative, looking after you all's, you know, well-being to control the project, control the cost, to control the quality.
Question for Howard. Howard, who will get the copies of these?
Well, they should, so they're going to tell you to the commission.
To the commission, yeah.
Yes, whoever we need to send, as many as we need, not a problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Are there any other questions from any of the other commissioners?
You just said weekly, you'll be there on a weekly basis? You get someone there every day?
We won't, we do not have someone on-site every day. What we, through the negotiations, we'll be there somewhere on average two to four days a week. If they, but here's our, our proposal is a lump sum proposal. There may be weeks if there's some issues that need to be resolved, we'll be there every day. There may be weeks, if there's some issues that need to be resolved, we'll be there every day, okay? If it takes a month every day, we'll be there every day. It doesn't affect what you're paying us, okay? If this job, the duration, we spaced on three years, but if it goes out longer, you don't pay us anymore, this is a lump sum fee, okay? For those services that was asked for in the works.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, could you expand on your experience as far as, you look for these things to save us money? I mean, is possibly you say your thoughts?
Absolutely, there, there has been projects in the past that we have saved our fee remotely. We look for that, you know, we can't stand here, I'm not going to stand here and promise you we're going to save our fee, okay? But we're going to promise you we're going to sit here and make sure you're getting the best value for the dollars that you're spending on this project. And we will evaluate, and we're close with Mosley, to even help price out different alternatives to see if we can. So we did, and we are always successful in looking for ways to save money, okay? The best time to do that is now, okay? Before it goes out to bid, in the early plan review.
I'd like to get, you, did you do the Johnson City, the John Borough?
We did.
Did you build that or just project manager?
We built that.
You built that, not you?
Mr. Selfie here is the project manager. He's an integral part of our team also in reviewing the systems. And actually, on that project, we came up with an alternative way to do the sales. That saved a huge amount of money on the project.
Any courtrooms in that building?
I remember right, there were four. Two upstairs, two downstairs.
Yeah, it was not a lot, I looked for a couple times, think that place where you, you and your client go in a little room there.
Uh huh.
But that's, that's a big city, it's going to be a whole, a little country for a year.
Actually, you know, we did the Justice Center, Nick did, and years before that, we built the original jail also.
Any more questions?
Are you also going to be involved, assuming you aren't all bid as they go out and come in?
Absolutely.
Be evaluated before we decide which ones to look at?
We'll, we'll be doing the qualification. Frankly, we're honored in soliciting, trying to get enthusiasm about the project to get as many bidders as possible on the GC side. And equally important, on subcontractor market, to get the best possible pricing. We'll be working to generate that excitement. We know the people in this area that can do this work, we know the ones that can't do that work, which is equally important. And so we will evaluate the team and the pricing and make recommendations to, to the commission.
Any other questions?
If not, Mr. Merle, I've got a question on this 10-day rule.
Okay. He's got a concern with the 10-day rule, eh?
Let me make a motion, we do a 10-day rule.
All right, we have a motion that we approve. See, I think that motion should, well, no, you can, you can make that motion. The motion comes from Tim Goins, that we approve Burwell as project manager. Is there a second? Let's wait until we get the motion on the board.
Is that going to be on the board?
Yeah, it's, item B. Item B. Okay, just a minute here before we ask for a second. One of our commissioners, you want to make that motion? Oh, oh, you're making the motion to set aside the 10-day rule? Oh, okay, that's not on, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. We have a motion to set aside the 10-day rule, we have a second from Commissioner Stepp. This is all going to have to be off the board, folks. So Jim Stepp seconds the motion, Tim Goins made the motion. Is there any questions about setting aside the 10-day rule?
Well, I'd like to explain more about what the 10-day rule. How come we, we don't qualify for 10-day rule, do we?
Mark, air.
Let me tell me a reason why.
10-day rule was established back in the 2000s. And basically, it was that between the time, and it was clarified back in 2005, I think. And, and basically, it is any contract that is, the commission votes on, should, can be presented at committees. No action is, is required, and then it would be voted on at commission, which is 10 days later. That's, that's what the 10-day rule is.
Any other discussion?
Is that, is that, I mean, the 10-day rule, then, it's in effect right now?
Correct, it's a local rule, it's not a state law, it's a local rule.
And how long we've been involved with right now, this contract being in there?
Well, we've had, we've had the contract about 24 hours.
24 hours?
And we, we negotiated on Tuesday. We had, we had a draft contract on Monday, Monday. Got a draft contract on Monday, and we negotiated on Tuesday, it changed. So we got the final draft Wednesday and sent it to...
What rules have come in effect, the 10-day rule? Are we the ones that made that 10-day rule?
The commission back in 2000 or 1990, 1990 something, 1960, maybe.
Why we did it or we wouldn't have it, right?
Yes, sir. And that was to, to give you time to review. Well, now, this is, this is, this, we, this is at your request, at you being commission, that we expedite this, and that we, you gave us the authority, being Commissioner Horner, the authority to negotiate, so we could go ahead and get the contract negotiated. Because every proposer that came up here and made a presentation talked about how critical it is from a, from a cost-saving standpoint, that they involved, be involved in the pre-construction part of this project, which is now. And so...
So you feel like that it's a cost-effective thing, that if we went 10 days, it jeopardized some cost effectiveness?
It, it cost us some time.
Any more discussion? Call roll, please. We're voting on setting aside the 10-day rule.
Jessica?
No.
Chris Ketchaw?
Hi.
Randy DeBoer?
Yes.
Thomas Stoddy?
No.
Tim Donwitz?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Hi.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
No.
Allee Arman?
Yes.
Mike Minnick?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Howard Shipley?
Yes.
Jim Stepp?
Yes.
Tyler Ward?
No.
I have it.
All right, the 10-day rule is set aside, I have it. Okay, we're back to the original motion of approving the contract. We don't have that yet from the chairman of the committee.
On the selection of the project manager, we accept Burwell, and I'll put this in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second? We do have a second, is there any discussion? Hearing and unrefutable motion, please.
Item 9B, 10848.
Okay, the motion is approved.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Horner. At this time, we will receive public comments from the audience. And we do have a request from one individual for five minutes. Did Emily hear? Okay, would you please come to the oath?
Thank you.
She is.
Mr. Chairman, I have some handouts for the members of the commission. May I present some of the commission papers already? And also the mayor, thank you. Oh, thank you so much. One free? Thank you, there's two. It's, it's a staple piece and a single piece.
Yeah, so you can post to the right as you can.
Okay, over the past week, I have had conversations with several members of the commission. I have been grateful for the commissioners who have taken time to call me back, meet with me spur of the moment, talk for an hour and a half, and even come to my house to pick up documents. Thank you, from the bottom of my heart. I also wanted to express gratitude for all of the hard work the mayor and the commission have put into planning the new Justice Center. I know it has been a long and tedious process with much deliberation. Thank you especially to all those commissioners who have pushed us forward to build a new jail which we desperately need. I come to speak tonight because I believe that there have been some oversights in the planning of the new Justice Center, something very easy to do with a project so large and complex. Often, an outside perspective can make the difference between a successful project and a failed one. There are two problems that need to be addressed by our new Justice Center that are not currently addressed. We need a solution to our pre-trial detention crisis. And we need a solution to our drug addiction crisis, including, included in the planning of the new Justice Center. Without including solutions to these problems in the plans, I'm convinced that the new Justice Center will further harm and not help our community. With that in mind, I'm going to read the petition that I put forward this weekend. Petition to halt the Hamlin County Jail. In our society, liberty is the norm, and detention prior to trial or without trial is the carefully limited exception. Chief Justice William Rehnquist. Whereas the Hamlin County incarceration rate has increased more than six-fold since 1970 and tripled since 2000. Whereas approximately half of the Hamlin County jail population prior to COVID-19 was being held in jail without a trial, pre-trial, without having been convicted of a crime. Whereas in the last 15 years, the Hamlin County jail population has more than doubled, and the pre-trial population has nearly tripled. Whereas pre-trial detention is the main factor driving the overcrowding crisis in the Hamlin County jail. Whereas a guiding principle of the legal system of the United States of America is that individuals shall not be, shall be viewed as innocent until proven guilty. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America demands that excessive bail shall not be required and that individuals shall not be deprived of their liberty without a trial. Whereas Hamlin County courts routinely set excessive money bail to detain people in jail with before-trial and unconstitutional and illegal practice. Whereas Hamlin County officials have been sued in federal court over these unconstitutional and unlawful detention and money bail practices. I'm going to repeat this, Hamlin County officials have been sued in federal court. That's Judge Collins, Sheriff Jarnigan, and a few others. Whereas Hamlin, whereas money bail discriminates against individuals on the basis of wealth and punishes the four before they have been convicted of any crime. Whereas pre-trial detention causes harm to families and individuals, including the loss of livelihood and home, and is a violation of an individual's constitutional rights. Whereas common sense pre-trial reforms, including reforms to Hamlin County's harmful and unconstitutional money bail practices would significantly and safely reduce the jail population. Whereas the release of individuals from the Hamlin County jail due to COVID-19 has demonstrated that it is possible to dramatically reduce the jail population, including the pre-trial population, without creating a risk to public safety. Whereas pre-trial detention is a great and unnecessary cost to Hamlin County taxpayers in costing incurred during arrest and processing, in providing for the detained individual in jail, in absorbing the cost of disruption to families due to the loss of a parent, spouse, or child. I'm going to skip the next one. Number 15, whereas typical dependence on illegal substances and crimes committed because of this dependence cannot be adequately addressed in the current or the proposed Hamlin County jail. People are suffering, going through withdrawals in our jail without the proper care. Whereas neither the current nor the proposed Hamlin County jail has the capability to meet the needs of individuals with mental disabilities. Whereas the proposed jail plans do not solve any of the four listed problems. Skipping ahead. We, the citizens of Hamlin County, insist that the county commission halt the process of advancing the proposed jail construction and instead implement pre-trial release and support programs. Thank you.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, you've got a topic to explain. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Yes, Karen Harwood, 1501 Ella Road. I just want to say, I am so glad to see more questions come out today. Thank you for taking the time, questioning, getting the information. Now, I just want to kind of leave you with an analogy and a little visualization and kind of give you an idea of the thing. We've all, everybody's always heard that you can indict a ham sandwich. Right? Okay, one oh one? Because for the vast majority, the prosecutor, the grand jury only hears the prosecution's eye. So if you pretend for a moment that I'm a prosecution and I show you this rock, nothing special about it, it's just a kind of a plain old yucky rock, right? Nothing spectacular. If it's on trial, or for an indictment, go for, you know, go to trial, they've only got that one statement. Mayor Britton admitted he misspoke on how much of a cost for a project manager. And I appreciate the admitting, but the thing is, is not, he's not the only one that made a mistake. You guys listened to him and took his word for it. Nobody questions anything or wants any hard proof put in front of you to back up what somebody comes in here in front to tell you. So now, my analogy, I'm swapping over, we're at trial. Prosecution, to get an indictment, said this was just a plain old ugly rock. Well, now you get to hear the defense side. This is where you look, you dig for information, you understand, have some knowledge of what you're dealing with. It's not such an ugly rock anymore, is it? When you dig down and look, that's where you get, as Paul Hardy would put it, the rest of the story. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Lindonelli, 2343, Joe Stephens Road. We started with a jail problem a decade ago. Then we ended up with a justice center, and we kept changing and adding. Oh, it was a multipurpose room, then it was another courtroom, and then, oh, we can put another 35 beds here, and we can do this, that, and the other. So then there were $85 million of bonds issued. $10 million for West High, $75 million roughly, jail justice center. Not just the hard costs of 60 to 65 million for construction, but you also have all the property you bought, the hail renovations coming up, the property swaps, the fees, and all that. When the $85 million worth of bonds were issued, you were asked to put it on a referendum. You said no. Later, a commissioner or several commissioners asked for a moratorium. And let's look at the one-level jail that is safer, and using Coffee County as an example, is cheaper and less costly to staff. You said no. Now we have a $75 million all-in jail justice center project, so you can incarcerate 600 people. What Emily said may show the fact that we don't need even that 600 jail, bed jail anymore. Things have changed so much, so dramatically. All of you with, wearing masks, except for Mr. Stepp, are evidence of that, how much things have changed. The empty jail, and I'll say empty, but it doesn't have nearly the numbers of people it had. Perhaps we do need to step back and think about if you did the pods, like Mr. Neesmith has talked about, perhaps you just start with 400, two pods of 200, and only add on if things go back, if you continue. and only add on if things go back, if you continue the pre-trial detention. And I invite you to look at, I don't know if Emily's given you papers, but I've looked at numerous documents indicating that our pre-trial detainee number is way higher than other counties and way higher than the state of Tennessee. So maybe we should look at the forty-five million dollar solution and a more comprehensive solution and go from there. Thank you.
Anyone else, commissioners, to address the commission?
Wayne Homer, they want to pick the US pump down. Uh, talking about the ten-day rule. I'd say everyone has to do my part with ten-day rules, but it's. So why make a while if you're not gonna go back? I don't understand it.
Thank you for your comment, anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Ella Road, Ella Road. One time, the president said government, ought the people, buy the people, for the people. Now we got government in spite of the people. I spent ten years of my life combat situations several times, but then a barrel of gun to defend my rights and the rights of everyone else out here. And then I come in here and I wanna exercise one of those rights and I get gavelled down. I see other people get gavelled down, uh-uh, you won't speak. Better read the Constitution, we got the right to come to our government and we have grievances. And we are not gonna get shut up by any of you. But if you don't wanna hear us in here, we'll go to the people out there and let them hear us, which we're starting to do today. And one little commissioner, teach the hissy fit because we practiced that right. We want to have the police haul us off. He wasn't too happy when he found out we weren't doing nothing wrong but exercising our rights and the police couldn't haul us off. Well, today was just a start. I said, y'all don't wanna hear us, you don't wanna even consider that we might have a song here. You don't wanna listen to any reason, cause y'all were experts and got it all figured out. All you wanna do is what the mayors are issue. Well, my cousin has a lot to do with electing you, Mr. Homer, not the mayor. Have another cousin has a lot to do with electing Mr. Goins, not the mayor. I have fifty-four relatives that have a lot to do with electing you, Mr. Stepp, not the mayor. Y'all better consider who you're working for, because if y'all not gonna listen to us and reason and try to be good stewards of our money, when we're trying to work with you, then your group has no option but to try to replace you.
Thank you for your comment, anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Bonnie Wellington, three seventeenth, Snellfield Street. You know, it amazes me how you guys can sit in here in this meeting and decide that you're gonna do away with the ten-day rule because nobody needs to know anything. And, you know, that makes us feel like you guys are trying to hide something. We feel that every time we come in here. It's really sad, you've got three or four good people on the commission, sure. But three or four can't find out the rest of you. And each one of you are commissioners, not the mayor, you're commissioners. You rented that office, you took an oath, but you're not, you're not standing behind your oath. Your oath became a me, 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 and that's how you're a student. You want this big Taj Mahal jail and I'm sure every one of you want that big bronze plaque, uh, that, I helped get this built. Well, none of that got anything to do with you, huh?
Thank you for your comment, anybody else who wants to address the commission? Do we have any commissioners who want to make comments at this time? Thank you, commissioners. I want to, uh, call your attention to the announcements for the committee meetings in September and also our regular meetings. You've got those, uh, dates in front of you. And then also, uh, you were given the announcement concerning the sorority and ceremonies that will take place here on August the thirty-first, please take note of that. And then also, I want to remind all the commissioners, if you don't care, to leave your notebook here so that, uh, Chris can update it for our community. We stand adjourned.